I just want to take a moment and thank our town administrator, Ryan McLean, the members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk Lori Reed, Town Council Carolyn Murray, DPW workers, and all who have made this unusual setting a reality. Democracy, absolutely. Democracy must, democracy will prevail despite the challenges facing our town, the Commonwealth, and our republic. With that, I call the 2020 Annual Town Meeting to order. The Chair recognizes Chief Perrin to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Chief?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Please be seated. The Chair recognizes Town Administrator Ryan McLean for some comments. Mr. McLean.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank Renee for serving as moderator in this definitely unique time and for putting in the time and effort he did to make sure this meeting went well. I also want to apologize. My son said I have to wear the yellow sunglasses tonight, so I'm sorry if that bothers anybody, but my son said I needed to, so. Thanks, I do.
Thank you for participating in the first outdoor meeting in quite some time. Does anybody here remember having a town meeting outdoors?
So maybe ever. We're certainly living in some interesting times. If anybody needs assistance from the town during this pandemic or as the result of it, I know some people have been, but please reach out to us. We're here to help if we can and where needed. I'd like to echo thanks, and Renee did a good job of calling out everybody who was so helpful in preparing this. It's definitely unique to change your venue for a town meeting, an important event like this, so I echo his thanks. Before I turn it over to Renee, I just want to let you know what you're holding in the contents, so we can make sure that everybody is making informed decisions and having as much information as possible. So in your packet, you'll find a white sheet. The top sheet is white. This is the Town Meeting warrant, as was posted on the town website and for those who reached out to us was sent to you. So this is the warrant and articles we'd be considering tonight. The pink sheet, which should be next, if we did everything correctly, those are the explanations of the warrant articles. So the most common question we get after we read a motion is, "What did you just say?" So this pink sheet is offering a plain English explanation of those for those who are looking to get more information. But of course, if that's still not clear, make sure you ask as many questions as possible. The yellow sheet, this is the recommended budget for town meeting as voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. The top sheet is a summary, followed by a line-by-line budget for you to review. During the vote process, if you see on the warrant there'll be subtotals voted, that's the vote we need in order to pass the budget. But the moderator will be going through each department line if you have questions. So if you do have a question as they read the department line, he'll give you instructions on how to speak on any part of the budget as we want to hear your comments, questions, and concerns. The blue sheet, the blue sheet, this year you'll notice that we've split the municipal budget vote from the various regional school committee votes. That's Quabbin Regional Debt and the Montitec. So this was done in response to recommendations from town meeting voters asking that the school votes be easier to understand, so they're being voted on their own. The blue sheet demonstrates that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are recommending a different assessment to town meeting than the one certified by the school committee. So there's more information on the blue sheet about that and will be explained during Article Nine, which is the Quabbin Regional School Assessment Vote. The green sheet, this packet includes information, so the green sheet plus the sheets behind it is information about the debt exclusion override proposed for the Hubbardston Center School roof. So this project requires a borrowing total not possible in the general budget. Therefore, town officials are asking to increase taxes by enough to pay off the borrowing needed to pay for this important project. The documents include the arguments for and against, as allowed by town bylaw, a question and answer prepared by our town's owner-project manager based on questions we've received from folks like you, and the existing conditions report, so you can understand why the MSBA accepted the roof project as a critical need for the town of Hubbardston.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming again tonight. We should be able to move this along efficiently, but still allow for ample participation.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. As a result of our being outdoors and social distancing, it has been suggested that we practice a voice vote. You've done this many times before. I'm just going to run through it quickly, just to see, as far as the audio, how clear that is. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, and Christmas is coming. Thank you, that will work. As far as a couple of quick housekeeping points, social distancing is asked, is required throughout all aspects of the town meeting. Microphones are placed here in front in this aisle. We ask residents to stay socially distanced when waiting to speak, six feet with a covered face. We'll do our best to sanitize the microphones after each use. Residents can pull down their face coverings at the microphone to be able to speak more clearly, ask questions, and deliberate warrant articles. There is an ADA compliant restroom, which is available, and the goal is to create a safe and efficient atmosphere for voters. At this point, the Chair appoints as checkers Mark Kresge and Bella Calviera. The required quantum of vote for all motions is a majority unless otherwise noted. Also, please silence your cell phones or devices, set them on airplane mode. This is being recorded. There are microphones, as I said, and please, you have to use the microphones, and please state your name and your address before you begin. In the interest of time and weather, I want to introduce the concept of a consent agenda, which is typically used for standard, reoccurring, or non-controversial articles. The consent agenda takes a group of articles and votes them together under a single vote. First, town meeting is asked to vote to approve the consent agenda, and if this motion passes unanimously, we then vote on the articles contained in the consent agenda. If anyone objects, then we do not use the consent agenda, and we vote on each article separately. For this evening, as moderator, I am proposing a consent agenda for Articles One through Six, which are standard, reoccurring articles. The Chair asks that town meeting take up Articles One through Six under a consent agenda. This requires a unanimous vote of town meeting. If passed, we will then vote on Articles One through Six as a block under a single vote. If anyone objects to any single article being included in the consent agenda, we can remove that article from the consent agenda and vote the remaining articles under the consent agenda. At this point, the Chair entertains a motion to consider Articles One through Six under a consent agenda. Mr. Galante moves, signed by Mr. Williams. And again, this requires a unanimous vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying no. Passes unanimously, thank you very much. The next motion is going to be that the town vote to approve Articles One through Six as printed in the warrant. This requires only a majority vote. Mr. Williams moves, signed by Mr. Galante, that Articles One through Six, as printed in the warrant, be voted as part of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes have it, and the Articles One through Six are approved unanimously. Article Seven is the budget article. Mr. Perego moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the following sums of money to meet the salaries and compensation of town employees and town officers as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight, and for the expenses and outlays of the town departments, and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2021, as printed in Appendix A to the warrant, and further to accept and expend federal and state funds to offset certain salaries or expenses and outlays. And the Chair will go over all of these in just a moment. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Galante. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. And Mr. McLean, did you want to speak at this time, or are we all set? You go ahead. All set?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the ability to speak on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. So if you take out your yellow sheets, your yellow sheets are the budget sheets. If you look at the top of the summary sheet, you'll see what we're calling the pre-COVID situation. So we will receive 162,000 in new revenue. A couple things to note here. A new growth number projections are down, and although we have some hope for '21, this doesn't help us right now. Neither does the overlay account. This is money's needed to offer tax abatements, and this amount is what's needed to cover projections. So then the remaining figures from the revenue side form the COVID impact. So normally, we receive a two to five percent increase in state aid. This year, even pre-COVID, we were looking at a decrease because of lowered reimbursement for veteran benefits. We have spent less despite offering veteran benefits to every veteran who qualifies. Once COVID hit, all state recommendations and in all towns were expecting and still are expecting state numbers to plummet to a point where many were recommending that we use numbers that were used during the Great Recession. This puts Hubbardston at an expected 15% decrease or a loss of 96,000 in state aid. Next, we look at local receipts. This is money the town receives for excise taxes, permits, pilot agreements, and more. This is also conservatively expected to go down as it trends with the economy. We did not get overly conservative, but a $46,000 reduction in expected revenue from this category is represented on your summary sheet. This left us with 162,000 in new revenue, minus 142,000 in expected losses from COVID, leaving 20,000 for new budget growth in FY '21. To offset the impact of this blow, the Board of Selectmen and FinCom is using 50,000 additional in one-time revenue called free cash to help balance the budget. The only item on the expense side that made a dramatic difference to the budget was the reduction in the Montitec assessment, which will be voted in a later article. This reduction was 86,000 expected, giving the town an approximate 160,000 to grow the budget. Other savings found in the municipal government helped offset the 2% recommended COLA increase for non-union employees and any other structural changes. Major increases to the budget include the following: 23,000 to the police budget, which funds contractual increases and shift coverage; 14,000 to the fire budget, which meets contractual obligations and shift coverage; 113,000 for the Quabbin Regional School District Assessment; 22,000 for the DPW, which funds contract increases in additional road maintenance; 23,000 for Worcester Regional Retirement, which is a mandatory assessment; 12,000 for the town clerk to cover a presidential election year cost; and 4,000 in liability insurance, which adds cyber protection to the town and a 3% increase. In terms of the long-term impact of this budget, in total, it represents a 0.65% increase over last year. It is intentionally low to absorb the impacts of COVID-19 revenue losses and still provide a balanced budget without triggering an override. Unfortunately, even with the lowered expenses, there are still some problems with this budget. Number one, we do not know what the state will do with aid. This could impact the Quabbin Regional School District Assessment as well as the town revenue estimates, as both are reliant on state aid. Two, the town is still heavily reliant on one-time revenues in this budget, meaning if free cash is not developed, there's a $150,000 hole in this budget that will not be available next year. At some point, this bill will come due, and it is my recommendation and the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee that if state aid numbers come back favorable, we remove the free cash from this operating budget first. Third, service levels are less than funded, meaning residents will feel the impact of a 2.5% increase without adding to services. Lastly, this budget still predicts a five-year deficit of nearly $1 million. It's imperative as a community to either grow revenues, and we're working on this, or control budget growth mainly in the form of outside assessments from dispatch, schools, Worcester Regional, and insurances. Otherwise, the only way the town can continue on this path or even increase a little bit from a 0.65% assessment increase is to pass an operational override.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLean. In order to allow voters a chance to speak on specific line items while continuing to move the meeting forward, each subtotal category will be stated, then the departments within the category. If you wish to speak on a department total, please signify by saying "hold" when the Chair reads it. For example, if you would like to speak about the moderator's salary, the Chair will start the general government category and list department moderator. Say out loud "hold," and you will be recognized once the Chair has read all the departments in the general government category. At the end of each subtotal, there will be a vote, and again, as the town administrator noted, the school budgets will be voted in separate articles later in this meeting. So let us begin with general government. And general government, the departments included are: Moderator, Selectmen, Town Administrator, Finance Committee, Accountant, Assessor, Treasurer Collector, Information Technology, Town Clerk, Conservation Commission, Planning, Economic Development, Zoning Board of Appeal, Building and Maintenance, Building Department, Board of Health, Senior Center, Veterans, Library, Recreation, Agricultural Commission, Historical Commission. General Government Total: $845,649.99. Any discussion as far as the category of general government? The Chair sees none. All in favor of the amount of $845,649.99 for general government, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Passes unanimously, thank you. Next, Public Safety. Departments in this subtotal include: Police, Fire, Ambulance, Dispatch, Emergency Management, and Animal Control. Public Safety Total: $1,361,590. Is there any discussion as far as public safety? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Category passes unanimously, thank you. Next, Public Works. Departments in this subtotal include: Snow and Ice, Streetlights, Cemetery, and Tree Warden. Public Works Total: $839,688. Any discussion as far as Public Works?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and DPW, thank you. Seeing none, all in favor of the category Public Works, please signify by raising your card.
Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Indirect Costs. Departments in this subtotal include: Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment, Unemployment, Health Insurance. Indirect Cost Total: $610,351. Any discussion as far as this category?
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Passes unanimously.
Next category is Debt. This includes short-term debt, long-term debt principal, long-term debt interest. Debt Total: $257,450. Any discussion as far as this category? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And this category passes unanimously, thank you. Article Eight, Mr. Williams moves that... I'm sorry? Total. Total general fund and operating budget: $3,914,728.99. We don't need to vote on that because we've already voted on the section, is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Article Eight, Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $563,000 for the Monticuzet Regional Vocational Technical School District for the fiscal year 2021. Is there a second?
Seconded by Mr. Gerard. Thank you. Any discussion of this article? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by raising your card.
Thank you.
Those opposed, please signify by raising your card.
One opposed, thank you, and the article passes. Ms. Rain, did you want to speak to Article Nine? Actually, before the Chair recognizes you to speak, Ms. Rain, Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,865,735 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2021. Is there a second to the motion, signed by Mr. Williams? Now, Ms. Rain? Thank you. You can.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear, you can all hear me, right?
Yes.
Great. I'm Susan Rain, Chair of your Finance Committee. Let's first review how we got here. On March 12th of this year, the school committee voted a $36 million and change FY '21 operating budget. The exact number represents a 3.4% increase over the FY '20 operating budget. On April 9th, we learned that based on that budget and projected revenues, our FY '21 Quabbin Assessment would increase by $370,000 to over $5.1 million total. 7.8% over our fiscal year '20 assessment. Ouch. Then came COVID. At the May 5th school committee meeting, Quabbin officials reported that a $1 million surplus in its FY '20 budget resulting from adjustments due to COVID could be reallocated to reduce the member town's FY '21 assessments while avoiding FY '21 budget cuts. We learned on May 9th that based on this reallocation and projected revenues, Hubbardston's FY '21 assessment would be $4,865,735. On June 11th, the school committee met again, according to the Mary Cassette, approved this reallocation. It is this number that is in our proposed budget and that is set forth in warrant Article Nine. Your Finance Committee recommended this number for several reasons. Chief among them, the new layers of uncertainty created by COVID. Instability in revenues, in terms of both local receipts and state aid, calls for even more conservative budgeting than as usual from your fiscally conservative town government. This instability is not unique to us. Everyone is facing these unknowns. In fact, these unknowns may persist beyond FY '21. COVID aside, though, a 7.8% assessment increase is unsustainable for us. It results in education consuming over 60% of this budget and paves the way for future budgets where feeding Quabbin will starve our other services. Going forward in our new COVID reality, however, this imbalance will snowball. Our proposed assessment figure of $4,865,735 represents a good faith effort to support our schools and to deliver our other services in a manner that is both fiscally responsible and respectful of our residents at a time when these services are even more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion of Article Nine?
Seeing none. All in favor of Article Nine, please signify by raising your card.
Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One, two, three.
Three opposed. Thank you, and the article passes. Article Ten, Mr. Hadad moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,846 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School debt for fiscal year 2021. Is there a second? Again, motion by Mr. Hadad, signed by Mr. Gerard, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Any discussion of Article Ten?
Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One opposed, thank you, and the article passes. Article Eleven, Mr. Galante moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the salaries, benefits, committee stipends, and other operating expenses of the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2021, and to meet this appropriation, that the sum of $20,000 be transferred from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund. Again, motion made by Mr. Galante. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion of Article Eleven?
All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously.
Article Twelve, Mr. Perego moves that the town vote to appropriate by transferring from free cash the sum of $6,000 to hire a consultant to complete the town's master plan implementation chapter and assist with other master plan planning purposes. Again, motion made by Mr. Perego. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad. Is there any discussion of Article Twelve? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Article Thirteen, Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to appropriate by transferring from free cash the sum of $75,000 to fund the design of the Main Street section of Route 68 in Hubbardston's town center, including all studies, surveys, and costs. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gerard. Any discussion as far as Article Thirteen? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your cards.
Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card.
Article passes unanimously. Article Fourteen, Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to appropriate by transferring from free cash free cash the sum of $30,000 to pay for the following fiscal year 2021 cash capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto as printed in the warrant. Again, new obligations, one, to assess and repair the Hubbardston Public Library Foundation in the amount of $10,000. Second, to fund the purchase of new computers and related hardware for the town departments in the amount of $20,000 for a new obligation total of $30,000. Motion made by Mr. Gerard, seconded by Mr. Hadad. Uh, Mr. McLean, did you want to speak to this? No need. Thank you. Uh, anyone else care to speak to Article 14? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 15, Mr. Hadad moves that the, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $22,350 from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserves for the purpose of funding the FY2020 annual debt service obligations for the roof replacement of the Hubbardston Public Library as previously approved under Article 14 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Is there a second? Seconded by, um, Mr. Williams. Any discussion of Article 15? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article 15 passes unanimously. Article 16, Mr. Galante moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $21,895.40 from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserves for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2021 annual debt service obligations for the roof replacement of the Hubbardston Public Library as previously approved under Article 14 of the June 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Again, motion made by Mr. Galante. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad. Is there any discussion? See, uh, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Article 17, Mr. Prego moves that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenues the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation products, uh, projects, excuse me, and other expenses in fiscal year 2021 as printed in the warrant with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Motion by Mr. Prego, seconded by Mr. Gerard. Is there any discussion as far as Article 17? All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 18, Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 to fund the cost of improving, renovating, repairing, and/or replacing the Rainbow's End Playground at Curtis Recreation Field at 20 Gardner Road as shown on Assessors Map 5C as lots number 29 and 123, which land is dedicated to active recreation purposes pursuant to General Law Chapter 45, Section 14, and to meet this appropriation, to appropriate the sum of $50,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Reserve Fund and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of $150,000 pursuant to General Law Chapter 44B, Section 11, General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, with the understanding that although such bonds shall be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that the principal and interest thereon shall be paid from the Community Preservation Fund and further that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds and notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this note in accordance with General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed, further that the Board of Selectmen be approved, be authorized to file on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary under the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Park Grant Program, or any other applications for funds in any way connected with the scope of this project. To accept such reimbursement grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Board of Selectmen and Parks Commission are authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered and managed by the Parks Commission. Again, this is a motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by, uh, Mr. Hadad and Mr. Prego. Thank you. Uh, this, uh, requires a two-thirds vote for borrowing. Any discussion of the article? Sir? You can just take a, the microphone.
You're gonna turn it on.
Mark Kreske. Uh, there was a lot of language in there, uh, authorizing applications for park grants and such that aren't in the printed form. Has a park grant been looked at for this particular project?
Right there. Good evening. Yes, the, uh, park grant, the reason why that language is so extensive is because we want to be able to apply for the park grant. So the Parks Commission and I are working together to make sure that we do apply for that. So hopefully, we won't need all of this funding. But this article does allow the project to go forward without that grant. But we're, we're hoping for success with the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Galante.
Just a quick point of clarification on, on your sheet. Uh, if you'll see underneath, it just says Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to clarify, I think it just wasn't printed, but should say Board of Selectmen recommends similar to Finance Committee and, and the rest of things on there. I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Any further discussion of the article? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, signify by raising your card. One, two, three. Three opposed. And the article passes. Thank you. Article 19, Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,969,746 to be expended under the direction of the town administrator to repair and replace the Hubbardston Center School Roof located at 8 Elm Street, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. The town acknowledges that the SMBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed one, the lesser of 59.84%. Eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. Further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payments of the cost of issuance of such bonds and notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Law 59, Section 21C, Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. Again, Mr. Gerard moves, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion of Article 19? Article 19 is also going to require a two-thirds vote. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, um, the, uh, the chair will recognize Mr. McLean first, and then, uh, Mr. Gerard. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello again. So Article 19 is, is asking voters to support a debt exclusion override to fund the restoration of the Hubbardston Center School Roof. And as a moderator said, it requires a two-thirds vote at this town meeting and a majority vote in favor of question one at the annual town election a week from tonight. So our school officials, who deal with building projects across the district and have, have dealt with many projects to include other roofs around the district, submitted a proposal, proposal to the Massachusetts School Building Authority last year, which is a organization that's created to help towns like ours fund large, uh, roof projects, repair projects in school builds. So they asked them to support this project. Normally, this process to get through the Massachusetts School Building Authority takes several years as many schools in many districts across the Commonwealth are competing for limited funds, as is pretty common with state programs. So normally, you would submit this, this proposal, and it would, um, receive points for you continually submitting it as they assess whether or not your needs are the same as those around the Commonwealth. So the school officials submitted it, and in year one, the MSBA deemed the roof dire enough to approve it and put it before the town as a potential project to fund. So the MSBA deemed this a top priority, and that was, uh, based on their examination and to include our town officials who all went up into the roof and looked at it, walked it, and made sure that this project was absolutely necessary. So with the MSBA comes certain things. First, they pay for a certain percentage. The Quabbin Regional School District is eligible for nearly 60% of the total cost of the project. So when they offer that grant, they're basically telling you if you are to follow our processes, which are processes that are deemed to be the most protective for towns building schools, then they will, uh, pay for a large majority of the project, in our case, 60%. So the total cost of this project is $2,969,746. This includes soft costs, which is the cost of, uh, engineers and our project manager, which are required by law. It also includes contingency costs, which are there in case unknowns arrive or construction costs go over. So the MSBA grant would cover $1.7 million of that $2.9 million cost. If we were to, to not pass this project, then we would be essentially telling the MSBA that the town does not support the MSBA proposal, and we would not be guaranteed or likely to get MSBA funding in the future, which means we would still have a failing roof without the ability to pay for it with a state grant. So the portion that Hubbardston would have to pay if this is approved and the MSBA continues to fund our project is 1.3 million plus interest. So a recent estimate, which is what most people want to know, of the annual borrowing cost with a 10-year borrow would be $150,000. So that's assuming we borrow for 10 years, the annual cost of principal and interest would be approximately $150,000 on average. So using the tax rate and the Department of Revenue's calculators, this would increase the average tax bill in Hubbardston for the length of the project and the length of the project only for $87 per year. The average home value in Hubbardston is $278,987. So you can extrapolate the cost of your home based on that borrow. And just to be clear, we've also looked at scenarios for longer borrowing, which would decrease the amount that we'd have to pay each year, and shorter borrowing, which would decrease the amount of interest that we have to pay. And right now, we believe that 10 years is the right figure to have the limited impact on residents for the cost of this project while not accruing a massive amount of interest that we could use for other important town projects.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Go ahead, Mr. Gerard.
You gotta turn on the mic. Just one question. Turn on the mic.
Excuse me.
Just one question. Does it leak?
Like a cig.
Thank you. Any, um, any further discussion? Before the, uh, the chair calls for a vote, uh, for the, the record, uh, we have the quorum requirement of 50. There are 132 voters here this evening. Uh, if there's a cause for giving us a, a round of applause, that certainly is it. So 132 present. Excellent. Uh, no further discussion. I'm sorry? Yes, Mr. Galante.
Hi, Dan Galante again. Um, just, just real quick, uh, it's a lot of money. We, we know it's a lot of money, but just, I just wanted to take a hear from us. Don't, don't think that we just, um, accepted their number. Um, as, as Ryan said, there are certain requirements we have to comply with, such as an architect to design it, and an owner's project manager based on the size of the project. But we spent months drilling down on their costs as well. There are some things we had control of, and we didn't let anybody pass any money past us. So we spent a long time getting those numbers down to as low a point as we possibly could.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One, two, three, four. Four, five. Five opposed. Uh, article passes. Article 20, Mr. Hadad moves that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for a special act in the form set forth in the warrant amending Chapter 292 of the Acts of 2012, establishing a charter for the town of Hubbardston by striking out in every instance in which they appear the words "Select Man" and "Select Men" and inserting in place thereof the words "Select Board Member" or "Select Board Members", and further by amending Section 1-4-2 of Article 1, as noted in the warrant, provided, however, that the General Court may make non-substantive ministerial revisions to ensure that gender and numerical issues in related text is revised to properly reflect such change entitled in form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and further provided that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this article. Again, Mr. Hadad moves, seconded by, uh, seconded by, uh, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Mr. Prego. Um, any discussion on this article? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Passes unanimously. Not to boast, ladies and gentlemen, but, uh, this concludes, um, the, uh, the warrant for the, uh, 20, uh, 20, um, Annual Town Meeting. If only Washington could be slightly as effective and efficient as all of us. Uh, the chair will, I'm sorry? Mr. Galante?
I promise this is not going to take much of your time. Uh, two things. One is, I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, not just from coming out tonight, but for the last few years, specifically, um, uh, in, in really being almost unanimous in the last four or five votes we've had in, uh, the Town Center Reconstruction Funding. Uh, this last $75,000 to get us to the 100% design, um, is going to be over $300,000 that we have all voted several times to put forth. And now with the Route 68 South done, 68 North getting done, and with our vigilance in putting up the money to get this design done, we've moved up two years in the state's program for them to pay the $5 million for the Town Center Reconstruction in 2022. So I, I really just, I just want to say, you know, there's been a Town Center Committee, we've been around for five years, a few of us are here tonight, but I think that's just a great thing, community coming together for that sort of a thing, because it's going to be, uh, a really transcendent project. So that's number one. Number two is, I just want to thank Jamie Hadad for his time here, uh, on the Select Board. This is his last meeting. He, uh, he- He, we tried and tried, but couldn't keep him around, but we want to thank him for his time and service to the community. So thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for picking that up. Okay, there is a typo that has to be corrected as far as Article 17. Instead of what is printed, which is 2020, fiscal year 2020, it needs to be fiscal year 2021. So before the town meeting had moved to that, there has to be a motion to reconsider. At this point, Mr. Galante is going to move to reconsider the vote seconded by Mr. Williams of Article 17. Any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. The motion to reconsider passes unanimously. Mr. Galante moves to amend Article 17 by inserting, excuse me, by striking fiscal year 2020 and inserting fiscal year 2021. Seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the amendment, the motion to amend? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the amendment passes unanimously. Madam Town Council, do we need a motion to adopt the amendment again? We do not. Thank you, Article 17. Thank you. Housekeeping. Because of social distancing, before the chair declares the meeting adjourned, dismissal. If this section, so again, to maintain social distancing, if this section can please leave first, and so that we don't have a bottle jam at the exit, and then this section to the chair's left, I'll be asking you to adjourn. Again, at this point, we are at 7:02, and the chair declares this annual meeting adjourned.